Welcome to the December 4th Capital Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and is being recorded to be replayed on the following Monday and Friday at 1:00 PM on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website, www.cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Victor Herman. As a reminder, please turn off your cellphones during the meeting and please sign your name at the podium when you come up to speak. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Welch?
Here.
Commissioner Graves?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Ruth?
Here.
Chairperson Ortiz?
Here.
Please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is my last meeting as chairperson. Let's see if I can actually get the top of the agenda right. I never do. Oral communications, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Public comments, this is the time when someone can get up and speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda, so if you're here about something that's not on this agenda, this is the time, this will be the time to do it. But first, it's the commissioners' comments. Anything?
I have several comments tonight under commissioners' comments. I'm concerned with the 41st Avenue Theater that we approved. There seems to be in the old book cafe numerous signs advertising coming motion pictures and it exceeds the square foot area for the front of the building. I'd like to see that looked at because somebody told me a couple of weeks ago it had to be on a complaint basis, so I'm a complainer. I'd also like to ask the chair if she would adjourn the meeting tonight in honor of Anita Arthur. Bruce Arthur's mother passed away this last week and I think it would be appropriate.
About that.
The third communication, it has to do with advising everybody that the bulkhead on Noble Gulch, everybody remembers the flood in Noble Gulch here, they called it a flood but it was broken infrastructure. Well, the bulkhead has been cracked for years. It's a facility that belongs to Zone 5 even though they bowed out of the thing that happened behind us here. And this very meager storm has washed out the path and the crews had to go out there and work on it today and I think we should be notifying Zone 5 that the bulkhead needs repair. What's happened is the face of the bulkhead cracked and it's now, from the water coming down Noble Gulch, has pushed it away from its original location, so the water works up in behind and takes out the path. Those are my three oral communications.
Thank you, Commissioner Graves. Anyone else? All right then, we'll move on to staff comments. See, I did it wrong, my last meeting I did it wrong. I don't know, there's something about the way this is done. Staff comments and then we'll come back to the public.
No comments tonight.
Thank you. All right, now's the time, if you have something to talk to us about that's not on tonight's agenda, now's the time. Anybody? Okay. I don't see anyone, so we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for the November 6th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Move approval?
I'd like to make comment. I believe there is a need for a correction on the, let's see if I can find it again now. It's the first, let's see. It's the finding that has to do with the driveway at 203. They're using the word, I'll read it to you, "The existing driveway area, although substandard shall continue to exist for onsite parking in its existing dimension and location." And of course, you guys proved last time, the bulb out on the side of the driveway for the upstairs stairway and so what's existing today and what will be existing in the future. So I think what it really should say in this finding is, per the plans approved on such and such a night. And that goes for also the conditions, there's a condition that is worded exactly like the one I just read. I think you all agree that you proved it with the, remember, I wanted a spiral staircase and so I didn't vote for it, so.
More of a bulb in than a bulb out.
Yeah. Well, it's out into that substandard driveway, whatever you want to call it. That would be my only correction.
So I think it's Condition 3 and Finding A.
Okay.
And I'd propose that you just add the words "as in the plan."
Okay, with that correction, I'll move the minutes be approved.
I actually do have another, and I'm sorry to say that I did not mark it, but I believe I spoke with Linda Friday about it and it has to do with a comment that was attributed to myself saying that DPRs are not necessarily part of the planning process and I do believe they are part of the planning, a critical part of the planning process. So if you would go ahead and change those as well. Is there a second to this motion? All seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to the consent calendar and there's one item on tonight's consent calendar. It's item number, item for 3816 Raposa Avenue. It's a design permit and coastal development permit for an addition to a single-family home located in R1 single-family residence zoning. And this will be voted on unless someone would like to pull it. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to pull that consent item? I entertain a motion. Make approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So those of you who are here for Raposa, you can, you can go. Congratulations.
Is there any place that those plans can be seen? Comments from the public on that?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, did you want to make a comment?
It went so quickly, I was unaware that that was happening so quickly.
Uh-huh. Yes, I have the plans right here, we're happy to let you have those.
I'm just curious, I live on Raposa, was kind of wondering what was going to happen.
Okay, it's a fairly benign addition to it, so.
Rear yard.
Yeah, it's in the rear yard, so.
Oh, it's not going up?
No.
No.
So, I'm all good.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
No, I wanted to say I appreciate that consideration with the hotel that went up. You know, that kind of changed the atmosphere of the street and I was just concerned that once someone put up her story on, that would kind of start a chain reaction of everybody wanting to go up.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, second stories, second stories are kind of a thing that's going to be happening in all neighborhoods, I'm afraid, land values being what they are.
Yeah, so.
All right then, that concludes consent calendar, we'll move on to public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight and it's on 124 Central Avenue. It's a design permit, variance and conditional use permit for an addition to a historic. Could you guys take it out in the back? Sorry. Single-family located in R1 zoning. This is a continuation of a hearing that we heard last meeting. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The application before you this evening is for a design permit, conditional use permit, variance and coastal development permit for an addition to a historic home at 124 Central Avenue. This application was reviewed by the commission during the November 6th meeting and was continued to this evening. During the November 6th meeting, the majority of planning commissioners provided staff with direction in support of the current design and a variance and to move ahead with the variance for the non-conforming front and side yard setbacks of the historic home. The remodel and addition of the primary historic structure are valued at 107% of the present value. With the non-conforming section of the zoning code, an existing non-complying structure may not be improved beyond 80% of the present fair value market unless the structure is brought into compliance with the current zoning regulations. Due to the historic nature of the home, relocating the structure to comply with the setbacks would be contrary to historic preservation standards. A variance is required to allow the structure to remain in the current location and exceed the 80% value. In reviewing a variance, the planning commission must make findings that there are special circumstances applicable to the subject property for the variance and also that granting the variance would not constitute a grant of special privileges. The special circumstance associated with the property at 124 Central is the presence of a historic structure. The planning commission may grant a variance to allow the historic structure to remain in its existing location and this would be in line with accepted preservation practices. During the last meeting, there was discussion about the existing DPR 520 for the property. The owner volunteered to have their historian, Bonnie Bamberg, update the DPR 523 form based on feedback received during the meeting. The updated DPR includes more information relevant to the life of Frank Renier. It also includes minor edits that were noted during, within the original report. And it should also be noted that the author did not change her findings that the home is significant at the local level and could contribute to a future historic district. I should note that due to the quick turnaround time with the holiday, there was not adequate time to have the report reviewed by the Architectural and Site Committee historian, Carolyn Swift, prior to the publishing of the packet. Ms. Swift submitted additional comments today that will become part of the official DPR record as continuation sheets and kept at City Hall and with the museum. I also, I checked in with the state about going about this in this procedure and they ensured me that this is the correct way in which to keep the record together and if it were ever nominated at the state level by the owner in the future, both documents would be in one place and all the information would be in front of them. During the final comments at the November 6th hearing, Commissioner Smith asked that I contact Seth Bernstein of Past Consultants who completed the architectural review of the home for consistency with the Secretary of Interior Standards and ask whether, ask what the impact of switching the location of the window and door on the front porch would have on the historic integrity of the home. Mr. Bernstein responded that although not recommended, the modification will not jeopardize future listing within a historic district. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve application 14-116. I also have slides of the other proposed elevations, should you want to utilize those in your discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions for staff?
Did you get a chance to measure today? I forgot to ask you.
I did not.
Okay.
Any other questions?
What was going to be measured, I'm curious.
The wall where the window is now and the door. And if the applicant's going to speak, I have questions for the applicant, but before we discuss.
I'm more curious about your question. You asked staff to measure something and I'm curious as why we all didn't get, you know, CC'd on this request. Not blaming you, not blaming staff, but I still don't have a picture of what was going to be measured.
It wasn't, I didn't ask staff to measure something, I let staff know that I have a question for the applicant and they were going to, if they could get out, because it's a question for the applicant.
Okay, I'll wait for that then.
All right then, I'll open the public hearing and if the representative for the applicant would like to speak.
Good evening, Madam Chair, President and Commissioners. Derek Van Alstine and I'm representing Doug Edwards and Kirsten Edwards. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
So first I wanted to say that I really appreciated the opportunity to go and walk around the house and there were, there were a lot of people there and it was, it was a really good experience. One thing I didn't really get to address while I was there was the question about the door and I think at the last discussion, it was clarified that you are intending to use the same door that's there today?
Yes.
Does that include the door framing and everything?
Yes, yes, both the door framing and the, or the door jamb, I should say, not actually the framing, I think what you're referring to is probably the jamb and the stop and the door and the hinges.
On the.
It will all just be moved over to the other side, as will the window, they'll both be switched.
On the inside of the house, when you're looking at the door, the framing around the door is wide?
Mm-hmm.
Is that staying or going?
On the inside, I believe that it has to get narrowed in order for it to make it work. On the outside, I believe it stays the same.
Okay. That was my question, because when looking at it from the inside, it didn't look to me like that was going to fit over there. But if you are narrowing that.
It does just barely and it will read the same from the exterior but not from the interior.
Other questions for the applicant? Do you have any other comments?
I just hope that you approve it as it was submitted and if you have questions, I'll be glad to answer them, of course.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to talk about this application? All right then, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners. Any commissioner comments?
Might are very brief. A letter from Carolyn struck me that in 1949, when I had a renewer, applied for a building permit for a new roof, I just wonder if she was subjected to this kind of scrutiny on her own house? And the other thing that strikes me is, I don't know, I've read the DPRs and these things and it almost strikes me that historical preservation is bureaucracy run amok. And whoever designed this house back in that day and age, for the whim of the architect or whoever had contracted with the architect to design this house, that door could have easily been, been there, just happened to be in that one spot. My own personal feeling, I think in order to maintain the character of the building, which is going to be done through the, through the overall process here, we have to allow a little leeway. I mean, we could easily lose this whole, whole project and the restoration of this house if we didn't allow a little flexibility. And so I don't have a real problem with the door being moved. I think it could have been put there in 1909 or '04, whenever this house was built and through the whim of whoever designed it chose to put it in the other location, but I don't think moving the door really destroys the historical character of the building. Those are my own personal feelings.
You can just go around the table, I guess, because I'm going to jump in. In the DPR, and this didn't change in the updating of the DPR, on page three, I think it is, Bonnie says the porch and entry are the focal point of the house. And you're right, I completely agree, it could have been the door here and the window here. It could have been, but it wasn't. And in looking at what Seth says and wordsmithing and dancing around, you know, will it kill us? Probably not, maybe not. I'm not exactly sure how strong he said, but he said he still wouldn't recommend it. So when I look at it and when I was looking at it from inside the house, it seems to me to be a simple compromise that validates that we do want to keep our historical structures. It's the only one that I think is not as subjective to judgment. The massing, I'll give that when this thing is built, it is my hope that the massing is not overwhelming. And I think that's possible. Drawings rarely really give you a three-dimensional view and I think you guys have done a really good job of trying to address that issue, so I can live with the massing. But the movement of the door and the window, I struggle because it clearly doesn't, it's not per the Secretary of Interior Standards and even though we may never have a strict policy in Capitola and a district up there and follow them to the letter of the law all the time, it's the only one and it just seems like such a small compromise to make that I would ask the applicant to reconsider that movement and not move the door.
Other comments?
I'll make some.
Okay.
Most of the planning commissioners are aware, so this is for the applicant and those watching at home. I believe Mick is correct in that the, the idea of what's proper in order to get a historical designation has run amok. And I say this because the idea that you have to make a new addition not look like an old addition, and that's not the argument here in this particular thing, but I can think of all places in the city since I've been concerned with the city or around the city, the big six, the big six sisters down on the Espinade, because we had to make the addition on the rear of one of those so that the state architect could see that it was historical in front and it's not in historical in back, I think that's crazy. I remodeled an inn with partners in Northern California, in Plumas County. The house was built in 1901 and I can tell you this, that when we purchased the home, it did not have a veranda and front porch and the rest of it, but I went back down to Chico, the town of Chico was, basically has the descendants of that family and they had pictures of the 1901 building with a porch and veranda and the rest of it on. And I was allowed to put it on the front and make it look like it did in 1901 and I'm very proud of that. It doesn't look like a new addition sitting on an old house. And so I have no problem with moving the door and the window. I have a problem with keeping bureaucrats employed to read plans.
Thank you.
Once again, I would commend Carolyn for her diligence and the work she's done and I think it would go a long ways should the city or the owner at some point want to move forward trying to get the historical designation. I agree with Commissioner Ruth that I think we tie our hands sometimes on these things. Seth's bottom line, even though that was his recommendation to leave it, was that he didn't feel that would take away from its ability to be designated. And then, you know, I did some soul searching and some actually research after this because I think it's important to keep the character and I think the owner wants to do that. I'm actually, I believe that the owner will do that, especially with the builder and the architect involved with that. But you know, not everybody uses Secretary of Interior Standards and LaScada is one of those areas, it has eight to 10 historical districts, they have a board and they specifically don't use the Secretary of Interior Standards because of some of these reasons, how it does tie hands. I think in this case, we're fortunate to have someone who has the means and the willingness to want to restore this residence. I don't think it takes away from the fact that Frank Renier lived there and I think if anything, it's going to add to that. And so for me, I could move forward with the, the recommendation that the staff has presented.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to say I love this project. I think it's going to be beautiful and you know, it's, I can't vote for it and I'll tell you why, but I really commend you for doing it. It sounds like it's going to pass anyway, so no problem. But I do think we've given some compromises on massing and what I didn't see was compromises on your part. I feel like we, you know, our body said basically you can have everything you want, massing wise, additions, taking down. massing wise, additions, taking down the old structure. And I would really like to see one compromise that two commissioners want here, but we didn't see that, so for those reasons and for the reason that I've, as I mentioned before, I've never seen Carolyn Swift, our historian in Capitola for the last, how many years?
Since 93.
Since 93. Come out so strongly about something and I feel that I need to stand with her on this. I feel that we've employed her to be the representative and the guardian of our history here in Capitola and if she feels this strongly about it, then I stand by her. So I'll be voting against this as well. So with that, I will call for the vote. Roll call.
We don't have a motion.
Oh, we don't have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
It feels like we have a motion.
We move forward with the variances outlined in the staff report that staff has recommended.
Second.
All those, so roll call, sorry. Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Commissioner Graves?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Ruth?
Aye.
Chairperson Ortiz?
No.
And congratulations, I'm sorry I had to say no, but welcome to the neighborhood and I'm sure it'll be beautiful, we'll be watching.
Thank you very much.
All right, that concludes our public hearings tonight. We'll go on to the director's report.
My report this evening.
Well, we are really going to get out of here in time. Commissioner Communications?
I just want to say that I'm going to second what TJ was talking about before and I think that for the planning commissioners to do some research into alternative ways of dealing with historic preservation is a really good thing for us to start doing in parallel with doing our municipal code. Because if we could come up with some clear policy and some recommendations to council, I think we'd go a long way into making residents, you know, people coming and buying homes and remodeling them, know what they can and can't do and helping to define, you know, what it is that is important to Capitola. So if there's a way that maybe this body and the Los Gatos people could get together in some kind of an informal educational chat, that would be helpful. And I've also heard that the state is looking to come to Santa Cruz County and maybe do some kind of a workshop. If, I don't know if you guys are plugged into that, but I'm hearing rumors, if that would be possible, I think it would be really good to get some of this body involved in that.
I can clarify on that. When I reached out to the state, they put me in contact with a gentleman there that does all the training and in talking with him, he is interested, they're laying out the dates for the coming year and locations, so I let him know about our space here and that we'd be willing to host and he's looking into that and what are the options in this area, but he will keep us in tune if it means we travel to Santa Cruz or if it's actually hosted here in Capitola.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Well, I'm not positive this is Mick's last meeting, but if it is, I appreciate having the opportunity to work with him and actually now that he's no longer a commissioner, if that's going to be the case, then maybe I can reach out to him and tap into all those years of wisdom. He's been on the, involved with the city, so.
Yeah, my wife asked me if I would reapply. I told her no, but she twisted my arm a little bit. And I told her.
She likes her Thursday night.
I spent nearly 25 contiguous years on the council. I followed that up with eight years as a trustee on the Santa Cruz Schools Board of Education and now four years here, plus 16 years as Chair of the Sanitation District. And I figured that's at least 37 years worth of meetings, so I think I'll find those chairs out there a lot more comfortable.
Yeah, that's great. You've been a really good addition.
I'm not going away.
Gee, really? All right, great. So I will adjourn tonight.
Excuse me, I do have a communication.
You do.
I'm curious as to what staff finally did with regards to the speaker that spoke to us a meeting ago, or maybe it was two meetings ago, with regards to the turnaround area on Grand Avenue where it meets Center up there or Central, excuse me. The reason I'm curious as to what staff did, the person that was talking expected something to happen and I went up there and, you know, I have a very large vehicle and even if I stayed out of the planning area that's in the right of way, I could not, you know, conceive of how the city could ever install a turnaround in that block. So what have we communicated to the applicant or to the questioner?
I responded to the applicant after Steve Jesper reached out to the sign company. There's going to be a turnaround sign that's placed in that turnaround area and explained there's no parking in front of it and that it's a turnaround only. And there was a miscommunication or something happened with the order from the sign company, so he's expecting delivery in about two weeks. The other update is that when you come along Fairview Avenue, they're going to be looking at relocating the, not a through street sign, it's set pretty far back within the block and by bringing it closer to Central Avenue, it will hopefully stop people from driving out in that direction.
So.
And getting stuck at the end.
I'll be perfectly frank with you, I, you know, I think signage works in some cases, but people are looking for a view corridor for Monterey Bay and it is a marine sanctuary and the rest of it. And I doubt that people that go up there and have to make that turnaround really live there or anything else and I don't think we're ever going to appease the person that spoke before us and I think that while signs may help a little bit, I think that location is everything and both, he has a beautiful location, but also it's a beautiful location to look at Monterey Bay.
So I will adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of Anita Arthur, who was a lovely lady. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.